We are ready.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. Good evening to the July fourteenth regular council meeting. Will the clerk call the meeting in order and certify the meeting?
This meeting has been noticed in accordance with Idaho Code seven, four, dash, two, zero, four.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item D on the agenda is changes to the agenda, council. This was probably as much my fault as anyone else's. On, at the June ninth council meeting, we had a discussion about the order of business going forward with one of our ordinances. And it was my understanding from that discussion that we had decided to postpone the third reading and adopting and publishing that ordinance until other administrative matters were in place. I believe, I believe that that is still the wishes of the council and believe that the agenda item warrants a brief pause on this agenda item. So I would recommend and move to remove item G one, or items G one, G two, and G three. Can I get a second?
I would second.
Great. We have, we have a second. Will Madam Clerk call roll, please?
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes. Okay, item E is the consent agenda.
Mr. Council President?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the consent agenda as written.
I would second.
Have a motion and a second. May I call for a vote?
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we're moving to F one, and this is item, or authorizing Mayor Evans to reappoint Ryan Montoya to the Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term, July twenty twenty five to July twenty twenty eight.
Mr. Council President?
Yes, Commissioner, or Councilmember Rasmussen?
I just, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize Mayor Evans to reappoint Ryan Montoya, but I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I think our city was very fortunate when Ryan decided to volunteer for the city and join the city's P, Planning and Zoning Commission. He's a terrific critical thinker, and I think, and I could think of numerous instances when I served on planning and zoning, where, where his thoughts on difficult applications became clear avenues and our clear avenues to solutions. So he's a great asset to our city and the Planning and Zoning Commission. So it's great to hear that he wishes to continue his service to our city. So therefore, I would move to authorize the mayor to reappoint Ryan Montoya to the Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission for a three-year term.
I would second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Will Madam Clerk call roll?
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yeah.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Thank you. Item F two, the Garden City Police Department Firehouse Subs Grant Presentation. Yes, and please step to the mic and introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Heather Terrell. I work for Garden City Police Department. If I may, I would like to hand out just a little paper if you don't. So thank you all for listening to me today. I really appreciate you having the time for me here today. Chief Stanbaugh asked me to put in for a grant that would help us receive some more AEDs, CPR equipment, training equipment for CPR AED safety, as well as we would get all the items listed on there, AEDs that are able to translate into Spanish, English, as well as mask sizes for infants, children, as well as adults, including the resuscitation bags and valves and all the different types of necessities that a first responder would need. With this money, we would just be able to, we, right now at the police station, we have two AEDs, one that stays in the station and then one that goes out with patrol. And with the amount of citizens that live here, as well as the traffic that comes in and out of Garden City, I, it was a great need of ours to expand on what we have for lifesaving equipment, for all the children, schools, residents, and the elderly that we do serve. So we were awarded the seventeen thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars for this, and those are all the items listed would be the one, what they would purchase for us and then send to us for that. But yes, we were really excited to receive this grant, and I just hope that you all vote in favor for it. Thank you again for having me. Appreciate it.
Putting in the work.
Yes, really appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Terrell, and I've had some experience writing grants, and that is a process. So, so nicely done. Chief, thank you there. Is there an ask tonight? Is this something we actually have to vote on as council? Okay.
President of the council?
Yes.
Real quick, just for the benefit of those that are remote, AED is automated external defibrillators, correct?
Yes, that's my understanding.
Yeah, yeah.
And further, just from what I understand, I think there's just a correction verbally. I heard seventeen thousand, four twenty-two, but the, the document we have says seventeen thousand, four forty-two, sixty.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Uh huh, yes, my bad.
Thank you.
Excellent. What's the pleasure of the council?
President of the council?
Yes.
I would move to approve and acknowledge the efforts involved in applying for a grant and approve the usage of that grant money as applied or as the application has requested.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Will Madam Clerk call roll?
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes, and thank you, Ms. Terrell.
Thank you.
Okay, item F three, Valley Regional Transit Funding Request.
And then you can just hit it. Just, okay. Well, thank you for having us tonight. Really appreciate being here. I'm Elaine Clay, the CEO of Valley Regional Transit. We're here tonight to talk to you about our annual funding request. You should have received a memo in your packet. The presentation tonight actually digs into that memo a little bit deeper with some real specifics for Garden City. The memo was, was kind of high level for the region. So we'll talk about some of our recent accomplishments, the funding request itself, and then wanted to talk about an idea that we've been talking to all of our partners about is doing a longer-term memorandum of understanding that would help, we think, both of us budget more reliably and predictably. Doesn't mean you can't do changes, but does maybe create a baseline for us to expect. So talk to, about that at the end. So this has been a busy year. We implemented Beyond Access, which is a consolidated service for older adults and persons with disabilities. It covers much of both Ada and Canyon Counties and offers rides if you're qualified door-to-door in, in that service area. It's actually been so popular, we're trying to figure out now, we may have to put some limitations on distance so that we can provide the rides that we know are the core of the service, but we're very excited about it. And then in twenty twenty-four, we also did a big service change, system-wide, and it's interesting, while we expect even bigger increases this year, typically in the first year of this kind of a service change, you might even see declines in service because you're changing people's habits, you're changing how they get places, and it can be kind of upsetting at first in terms of, you know, what do I do? How do I do it? Instead, we've seen a small increase in ridership, and in some cases, really big increase in ridership as a result. And so now this, this year, we're focusing on some of the routes that didn't catch on as quickly. What can we do to those? And some were, although ridership is up because we've increased service rides per hour maybe aren't as high as they used to be. So we're now trying to get all of that back up to, to speed so that we reach some of our goals, which were closer to a twenty percent increase overall after the three years of, of service. So FY twenty twenty-four, Garden City Ridership increased one point, seven, eight percent over the previous year, but I'm going to show you year to year from service change to service change, and it's a much bigger number than that. We also held our first annual Community Transportation Association of Idaho Transit Day at the Capitol. This is something that Valley Regional Transit this year helped sponsor. I got an intern, we did a lot of economic impact data analysis, and learned that, in fact, transit does have a big economic impact across the state and especially in this region. We were able to share that with legislators, and we're looking forward to doing a, a second year this year with even deeper data. So I'll share a little bit of that. So here's a really, I think, important, important chart for you guys. So while I said that ridership overall for the, the, our yearly numbers, which go January to January, we're up one point, seven, eight percent from the June to June, which is, or at least as much as we had over this, which is since we made the service change, we, we would note that on the Route twenty-one, there's now half-hour service much of the day, and there's Saturday service as a result. These are just Garden City boardings. There's sixteen hundred and twenty more rides that were provided in Garden City alone. There's a new Route twenty. It used to go downtown from Fairview and Orchard, and now it comes down into Garden City and goes out to Hillside Junior High and then back up. So again, just in Garden City, seventeen hundred and forty-one new riders on this new route that we introduced. We lost a few rides on the Route nine, mostly as a result of all the construction that's been going on on State Street. We expect to pick those back up as soon as that construction is actually complete. And we were about even on the Route eight, which didn't change a lot in terms of what happened in Garden City. But overall, we're up three thousand, hundred and twenty new rides in Garden City as a result of the service change, seventy point, seven percent increase. So think of all of the communities that I've been talking to this year. You guys came out, I think, really the best in terms of how this service change impacted your, your population. At the end, if, if the council would like to ask some questions, I'd be happy to talk to you afterward.
Please, yeah, please continue.
So highest average boarding rider, average boardings, Route twenty-one at Glenwood and Strawberry Glen. This is a place that's become very important, a place for people to get on. Route eight at Shindon and Maple Grove during the week, we know that while this is just outside of your service area, it's an important, many of those folks are coming in or out of Garden City. And then the Route twenty at Shindon and Thirty-seventh on Saturday. So as I spoke about all those increased riders, these are the points at where we're seeing the highest increases at a particular boarding site. We're doing a lot of projects, capital projects as well this year and last, and there's a, a lot of them that touch Garden City. State Street, we're piping the canal from, all the way from Glenwood to Old Horseshoe Bend Road. And while it's on the other side of the street from you, what it will do is provide a multi-use pathway that full length on that north side, which we think, given the new crossings that will be introduced, I think one at Bogart, well Bogart already has one, one at, can't remember the name of this next street down that has the new development added. Anyway, there's going to be a crossing there as well. That will provide really good connectivity for folks in your community to get to various bus stops and to get to various things on State Street.
Is that Omar? Is that the connector?
Yeah.
Omar, okay.
I know it wasn't you, and I just. Thank you. We're also doing big improvements at Bogart and Highway forty-four and at State and Gary, and then on the Pierce Park segment on the Garden City side, there will be, again, a multi-use pathway. And associated with that will be a couple of new stops, that'll be higher amenity stops than what you've had in the past. We're looking at stops around the fairgrounds. We know with the development there, we're talking to the county and the folks that are developing that to understand what we can do to improve the connections and the stops there. Of course, the drainage improvements on Shindon, I think are going to be a big deal, and hopefully along with those, we can improve some of the pedestrian connectivity. And our staff has been participating in the DOT grant, which is now moved toward a transportation master plan. And I think Stephen can talk more about that if you have questions, because he's the one that's been participating, but we're excited about that and the things it might bring. And then finally, we've got a long-range plan update called Valley Connect three point O, and I'll show you the impacts on Garden City. We've also identified some projects that we think could have big implications for Garden City. When we did the service change last year, we increased the service area of what we call our lift connections. So those are a lift ride from an intersection near you to the nearest big transit stop to get you onto the transit system. And you can access that for two dollars if the total ride is less than eight dollars or two dollars plus if, if the total ride goes over eight dollars. And we've seen a doubling of calls for service on that. And frankly, weren't expecting quite that much extra service. So we've got to figure out what, what's the next step with that, because we, clearly it's a valuable service. How can we expand it even further potentially and still keep it within budget? So we'd like to talk to you about that. Our Beyond Access service I mentioned is getting near capacity already. It's become so popular, we're looking at ways to co-mingle it with regular public transit services, such as paratransit services and in the case of Canyon County with their on-demand services. And in doing that, we think we can provide more rides to more people more often. So again, right now, because we're reaching capacity, we're trying to be innovative to figure out how can we do more without asking for more money? So we also see some potential for new stops at Main and Fairview closer to Garden City. Right now, our stops on Main and Fairview are at Whitewater Boulevard. Could we bring some to Garden Street, for instance? And would that better serve Garden City residents if we could do that? So another improvement that we'd like to talk to you guys about and how we could coordinate that. So the Thriving Communities Grant that I mentioned, VRT, really appreciates the pivot to a transportation master plan. We think that'll serve you well, although there's been a number of efforts at that over the past few years. I think the, by doing it through the Thriving Communities Grant, it, it may hold more sway with both ITD and ACHD, so we actually get some of it done. So we're excited about it. The ITD Shindon Drainage Study, again, I mentioned those bus stop pads that might come along with that will be good for you. More ongoing State Street improvements, and the State Street executive team and technical team continue to work on those. So those are all things that we foresee over the next year that we'll continue working with you on and hoping to coordinate as those go forward so that our services are integrated into them. This is the planned service match map for Valley Connect three point O. As you can see, there's a rail line on that. We're hoping, well, we're working toward finding a way to provide service on that rail line as a regional connector. But most importantly, all of those green lines are bus service that we envision being fifteen-minute service all day long. And you can see that three of those work their way through Garden City or touch Garden City in some way or another. Fifteen-minute service, right now, the best service you have is thirty-minute service, and that's only on the twenty-one, and that's only part of the day. Fifteen-minute service on these two lines, we think, would be a game changer for making them reliable and attractive for people to ride them more often. So here's our funding request. As you might remember, last year, we had a general assessment and a special assessment, and the mayor did step up and provide the funding for that special assessment. Because of the rides that are being provided in Garden City as a result of the service change, we're asking that you consider putting the service assessment in the budget itself and recognizing this is a really, really tough budget year for everyone. We've talked to the mayor about it. Mayor thinks he's identified some funding that he could put toward this. So our, our request here is the full thirty-three thousand. Whether it comes in one chunk or two from one budget category or another is clearly up to you. And, but I think the important thing for us is hoping that you recognize how valuable this added service has become to your residents. On a per-ride basis, given the number of rides, new rides in Garden City, that's actually a pretty cheap service if you look around the transit world for what it typically costs. So I hope that as you build your budget, you can figure out a way to build this in. So this MOU, or Longer-Term Agreement, we have one with the city of Boise, and in their case, it's built on a percentage of budget, which allows them and us both to plan in the future, but also allows for some growth, because as they grow, the dollar amount grows, even though the percentage stays the same. We've talked to City of Meridian about potentially doing something similar, but doing it on a per capita basis, so figuring out how much per capita and building that into the budget. Again, as you grow, that per capita number grows. And so it gives both of us a little bit of room for growth without having to come back next year and saying, hey, I know last year was only this, but this year we need this much more. You've already planned for that. Within that agreement, the other two things that happened that we find to be really helpful is that while you can change it, obviously, the state constitution doesn't allow us to appropriate money for a different council next year. So this agreement says this is how much you'll budget for. You can always change that amount. But what the agreement calls for is if you decide to, especially if you decide to reduce it, but even if you increase it, you might say, hey, we got a windfall issue and we want more service, that you have a public hearing, and then you let your residents actually give you input on that before you make the decision by majority vote of the council. And in doing that, we've, you know, over the past couple of years, been surprised by a couple of decisions by various councils where just in a budget workshop session with no one else in the room, because that's how budget workshop sessions work, they decided, hmm, you know, we really need money over here. Why don't we take it from here? And then they pass that decision along to us. Well, we are required by federal law to have a public hearing if there's a change in the service. And so after the fact, after they've made that decision, we have to go back and make a, have a public hearing anyway, but we have very little power to influence that decision if it's already been made. So we, we think if we build this into a process, that we're all better off, that no one ends up being surprised. And certainly, it gives your public a chance to comment if you decide to make some changes or if there's a need to make changes because of whatever's happening with the budget. The other thing that, that MOU can do is outline how we would communicate with you. So these numbers I just gave you, we could do that more often. We could come and do discussion sessions if, if that's what you'd prefer. We could have sessions with your planning team more often, if that's what you'd prefer. But again, give us a chance to figure out what kind of communication helps you the best in your planning and make sure that we've got that. One of the challenges that we've always had is our, our capital program. Anyone who has service, we ask a little bit typically for capital improvements, and those include buying new buses. They include the bus stops, those kinds of things. Occasionally, we have to work at our facilities. Right now, we have a five-year plan, and those things are all outlined in it. They're pretty lumpy. So one year it'll be nothing, and the next year it'll be this, and the next year it'll be that. So the other thing Long-Term Agreement could do would either be to make sure that that outline is in your head and in your budget, but also to potentially smooth it out, say, well, instead of doing the lump, here, here would be the even across the board every year. And again, just an opportunity to have a more predictable discussion about how to, how to fund those. Now, I'll tell you that in the past few years, you haven't been part of this capital because we haven't asked a service assessment. We're hoping that as you see the benefits of that service, we can begin to think about that. The capital is typically, in your case, very small portion of the overall. So we think the benefits of this would be no surprises, or at least fewer surprises, understand the upcoming capital needs, plan to smooth them if you think that's the way to do it, develop a strategy to address growth if, if you are one of the communities that ends up, you know, I know that you don't have very much land that's not already developed, but there's a little bit. If one of those ends up with a big development on it, and certainly some of the higher-density developments, we can figure out a way to help you capture some funding from it that might help us, for instance, agree on this communication process and allow both of us have better advanced planning on our budget. So it's not something we're asking you to do this year. I just wanted to introduce the idea this year and over the next year, have discussions about, are you interested? How would it work? What would the structure be? We could provide some examples, for instance, and then have a discussion around those. Can't be here without bringing this up. And this doesn't mean that we're asking you for any money, but we recognize that what's happening at the fairgrounds is going to have a big impact on congestion, big impact on demands for service, your police service, our transit service, other kinds of services. And we look forward to figuring out, is there a way that we can work with the developers and with the county and hopefully with you, Garden City, to also be a participant in maybe benefiting from some agreement to figure out how to really serve this well so that the impacts on So that the impacts on, on your city are positive and not negative, on the region are positive and not negative. So just bring this up because it's been on our mind. And we've already begun some early discussions about how to address it. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you, CEO Clay. I do have a question. Does the agency, is it allowed to charge an impact fee based on new development?
We are not, and that would be a great state law change if we could find support for it.
Thank you.
Councilman Page.
Yes.
Thank you, Derek Clay. I just had a couple of questions. The first one, when I was going through the packet, just looking at some of the graphs, my impression was that ridership was down because all of your ridership trends year-over-year from 23 to 24, and even 25 is even lower than 23 to 24. So when you, so my first question is, is there seems to be a discrepancy in the grasp versus you said more ridership, but the graph showing ridership trends being lower. So that was my first question.
So two things, and I'll let Stephen come up and, and talk about this as well. These are the full routes. So for instance, the Route 20 is compared to the Route 6, which used to be a route that went downtown, and now doesn't anymore. So a lot of people that were heading downtown no longer use it. But people in Garden City didn't used to have access to it, so all of the rides in Garden City are new roads.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then the second question I had is, I just wanted to understand a little bit more about the Lyft deal that you have, which sounds, sounds interesting. So my understanding is, is if I live, I can go to the closest intersection where I live and they'll give me a ride to a bus stop? Is that correct? And so my question is, is I know a lot of people don't take public transportation because it doesn't get them close enough to where they work. So if, I think I read somewhere, or one of your presentations, is if, if you have to walk more than a quarter mile, I'm going to drive my car. And I noticed when you had your map, you don't have a bus station like Micron. The train's going to go there. But our biggest employer really in the city doesn't have a bus stop by it. And so is there any potential to maybe have a Lyft-type program where it drops you off at the bus stop and gives you a ride that last quarter mile to work? Because people aren't going to take the bus if, if I have to walk too far.
So the Lyft, and, and thank you for bringing that up. The Lyft program does provide either a ride to or a ride from a transit stop.
Okay, it does, okay.
To another location. And you're right, our plan right now does not show a stop at Micron, although the rail, we would expect the rail would stop at Izzy Minigall, and there would be a connection between there and Micron. We are working right now on a plan to provide service to Micron because we, that isn't mature yet. We don't have all of the things on here. The other thing about this map is that we're really only showing the green lines are the, the lines that are 15-minute lines. The blue lines, which don't show up as much, are the lines that are 30 or 60-minute. And so with, once you, once you get the blue lines on there, then you begin to provide service to Micron.
It's just a longer.
Yeah, it's just not as frequent, at least at this point.
Okay, yeah, that, that was just, that just caught my attention just because I know so many people that work at Micron. And it's only getting bigger. Okay, thank you.
Council President, Councilmember Rasmussen. Thank you very much for your time and being here tonight. My questions are probably more oriented around the industry itself, the transit industry itself. I'm just curious.
Sure.
Is the rate structure for VRT similar to cities of similar sizes? Or are we more of a bargain, for lack of a better word, or more expensive?
We're, we're actually relatively cheap. There are a few systems that have gone to free rides, very few that are less than us per ride. Ours is a dollar fifty regular fare, seventy-five cents if you're a qualified discount. Two fifty for a full day, and then a dollar twenty-five. We are looking at those fares this year. We think it makes sense with all of the changes and with all of the growth to make sure that they're at the right level. I don't anticipate that they would go up a lot. In fact, if anything, anticipate that maybe the regional fare will go down a little bit. And that will work instead to make them simpler and simpler to use, which is been what I've been trying to do since I've gotten here.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess kind of a follow-up to that is how elastic are transit riders to price changes? In other words, are they reactive or are they not too reactive or?
I, you know, Stephen can maybe answer this one a little bit better than I. He may know the most recent literature. The transit riders will absorb small changes in transit fares. But if they get very big, then they do start looking for other options if they have other options available. One of the truisms of transit is that the more you change things that make it harder for some people to ride, the people who will choose not to are the peoples who have, are the people who have a choice. And what you'll end up doing is making it harder for the people who don't have a choice. So we're trying really hard not to do that. We're trying to make it easier for everyone, including people who don't have a choice.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You bet.
President of the Council.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Jorgensen.
Ms. Clay, thank you so much for the, this presentation. I really appreciate it. I made some comments prior to the, the meeting commencement that I really want to applaud you and, and the team. The efforts from, of making the, the, the services more visible and more effective. And clearly, the numbers represent that for our citizenship. I also want to further call out that the, the beyond connection is, you know, something that's valuable in our communities. And specifically, we're very proud that we have a representative from Garden City going to the Special Olympics. And he leverages that service pretty extensively. So thank you for that very much. Again, the numbers speak for themselves. It's a valuable service to our city. I have a couple of questions regarding the, the structure of your governance and funding. So you mentioned that federally you are required to have open meetings, a, a public hearing. How, how much governance and how, what is the extent of federal funding and governance of VRT?
So our funding is about half federal, actually. Depending on the year and how much capital we have, the more capital projects we have, the more federal we have because it's a 20/80 match, whereas operations is a 50/50 match. Typically, we end up with about 55% federal and 45% local. But on the operations side, it's just the opposite, about 55% local, 45. So our total budget, our total operating budget is around 24, 25 million. Our total budget is closer to 40 million, again, depending on how much we have in capital projects that year. And I can get you a breakdown of all of it if you'd like.
Yeah, I would be interested in that. Now, regarding the, the governance, are there other requirements federally that, as a city contributing, that we should be considering reflecting? For instance, the public hearing, right? If you're going to have to demonstrate.
Hearing really is, I think, a good practice once you have a service assessment that once a year, you ask your public to give you some input. Is it working? Is it not? What can we do better? What would you like to see? The service you have is maybe not as robust as some places, but I think it's getting to the point where that might not be a bad idea. And we'd be certainly happy to help you with that. Absent a public hearing, the other thing that we can do, if there's not going to be major changes in the transit, is help you do something like we did in, in Canyon County this year, which was Canyon County Transit Day. And we went to the NAMPA Library, and we went to our Happy Day Transit Center. And all day had an open house and a little presentation. We also had a focus group with service groups that served the people, many of the people who use transit over there. And in that, we did a survey. We gave them ridership information. We gave them potential for expansion based on this Valley Connect 3.0 plan. And asked their input for how would they like to see service change in Canyon County, if, if at all. And so I think as we did that, it occurred to us that we could be doing more of that more specific local kind of outreach in various places, and would be happy to talk to you about something like that.
Great, thank you very much.
You bet.
Great, well, thank you for your time. All right, is there any other last, last words?
Just really excited to be here, looking forward to, if you have any questions as you work through your budget process, being available to answer them. Looking forward to coordinating with you in the future on figuring out about better outreach and better and, and potentially thinking about this MOU. I guess the last thing I will add is that on the Route 20, because it's a new route, we've recognized that still a lot of people haven't discovered it who we think could really benefit from it. So we're going to do very specialized, focused outreach around ridership on the Route 20. It will go to residents who live near enough to use it. It will go to businesses, again, within that watershed that may either attract riders or attract employees. And do information and rider training sessions around all of that to see if we can attract even more riders. So excited about that.
Great, thank you for your leadership. Thank you very much.
To all of you as well. I appreciate how hard it is.
And sir, did you need to talk with the director after outside?
So cost benefit, we did not put a slide in here, although there was one in the packet. For Valley Regional Transit as an agency, we believe for the 21 million that we invested the year that we did the study on, there was an economic impact of 52, almost $53 million, 52.9 if I remember right. Overall, across the state, that impact held true, about a three-to-one return on investment for every dollar invested in transit on economic impact. And be happy to share with you the link to that study if you'd like to look at more.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item F. F4 is the Mayor Evans update regarding parking and traffic issues. For those who are on Zoom and in the room, I am not Mayor Evans. I'm a council member elected by the public and grateful to be serving. I did not receive a dossier from, from the mayor on, on this agenda item. Lisa, do you have anything?
No, I believe he intended to be here at that meeting to provide that. Now that he can't, we'll, we'll move that to the next meeting.
Wonderful, so we'll skip that agenda item. And let's move to G. Four. Item G4 is to authorize Mayor Evans to enter into the Ada County Emergency Medical Services Intergovernmental and Joint Power Agreement Regarding Capital Improvement Plan for District System Improvements and Ada County Intergovernmental and Joint Powers Agreement Concerning Capital Improvements Plan for County System Improvements for Ada County Impact Fees. That's a mouthful.
Council President.
I'm Mr. Wadams.
Hello, yes, Leon Letson with the county. He's on Zoom. I think he's going to provide a little presentation on this. I have reviewed both of those agreements. I, I don't have any problem from the legal side of the House on those two agreements. The county would indemnify the city. There's an indemnification clause in these agreements. So I feel comfortable with these agreements. My recommendation is to sign off on them. But I know Mr. Letson has a little presentation to remind the council why do we need these impact fees?
Thank you, thank you, Tony Wadams and Mr. Letson, welcome.
Yeah, thank you, counsel, and thank you, Charlie. Yeah, in terms of the presentation, I didn't bring the same presentation I shared last time when we essentially got the kind of green light to continue down this road with Garden City on the adoption of these studies into your conference of plan. I can give you a quick reminder, it's for the services of the jail, the coroner, and the EMS. We've entered into a similar agreement with Meridian just recently. And what this agreement really does is just authorizes your staff to begin the adoption process for the comp plan amendment that's necessary to recognize these studies as valid in your community. The follow-up effort would be to actually establish the ordinance to collect those fees based on the studies and as well as establish the, establish the inter-local agreements that takes care of the administration of the fee in terms of how your staff collects it, how it's transferred to the county, any costs that may be associated, any timeframes that we would need to observe. But yeah, we're just here asking to get the ball a little farther down the field. We're not near the end zone yet, but every little step gets us closer. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Letson. Questions from the council?
No, don't.
None.
Excellent. Well, what's the pleasure of the council?
President of the council. I moved to authorize Mayor Evans to enter into the Ada County Emergency Medical Services Intergovernmental and Joint Power Agreement Regarding Capital Improvement Plan for District System Improvements and the Ada County Intergovernmental and Joint Powers Agreement Concerning Capital Improvements Plan for County System Improvements for Ada County Impact Fees.
Second. Great, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Yes.
Councilmember Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Letson.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay, item G5 is a resolution 1210-25 to approve an agreement between federal aid project and the city. Director Thornborough, thank you.
Good evening, councils and council president Page. This matter that's before you, we discussed a little bit in January, January 13th. And the city had been approved for funding, federal funding to do a sidewalk project from Riverside Drive to the bridge. At that point in time, we thought that it was a little bit further along than anticipated. We had understood, members of ITD had understood that they had design work done that actually wasn't as far as long as they thought it was. And so they anticipated that the city's match for that federal funding would bump up to $89,694. That has stayed constant as they provided the state and local agreement to us, even though their anticipated overall cost looks like it's gone up another $11,000. But they have not adjusted that to the city. And so tonight, the request is to enter into that state and local agreement to do the sidewalk work from Riverside Drive on the west side of Glenwood, along Glenwood to where the sidewalk starts at, at the bridge. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Great, questions for the council?
No question.
Thank you.
Great, so what's the pleasure of the council? Is there any discussion?
Council President, I would just go ahead and move that we approve Resolution 1210-25, which is a resolution approving an agreement for a federal aid project key number 24702 for a pathway on the west side of Glenwood Street from the bridge north to Riverside Drive, and authorizing the mayor to execute said agreement and providing an effective date.
I would second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Councilmember Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Excellent. So we are at the, at the time to adjourn. Is there a motion?
I so move.
Second. All right. And council?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, let's, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.